Good afternoon. We are calling to order the joint meeting between the El Segundo City Council and the Recreation Parks Commission. We're going to start with roll call and then we'll go straight into public communications. And Madam Clerk, if you could do roll call, roll call, please.
Absolutely. Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Nichol.
Present.
Councilmember Hurstuck.
Here.
Mayor Pro Teminazal. Mayor Boils.
Here.
Recreation Park. Kelly Watson.
Here.
Julie Solnack.
Here.
Dave Lues.
Here.
Lee Davis.
Here.
Bob Moda.
Here.
Great, thank you.
And Mayor Pro Tem is going to be a couple of minutes later, thanks. Could I ask someone from the Recs and Park Commission to lead the pledge, please? Mr. Lues, thank you, please stand.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Lues. Man, I wish we had this full of attendance at our regular city council meetings. Feel free to come down on Tuesday evening, 6:00 PM at City Hall, it's right over there, on Main Street.
Over there.
Over there? Oh, thank you, Councilman Nichol, over there, thank you. All right, so, we are going to cover a couple of things. Before we do, we've got public communications, and I'm going to turn over to our city manager, Mr. George, because I know we've got a lot of people from the tennis team here in the audience and all their stakeholders. Mr. George.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Boils. Yes, and we are, staff is very pleased to have this meeting this evening. I want to thank both the council and the commission for sharing your time this evening on this important matter. As you know, the park needs assessment was done back in 2021, contains a lot of vital information on how we move forward with our park facilities and structures and amenities. So tonight, we're going to be going through a couple of different options of how we want to potentially implement the recommendations in the needs assessment, talk priorities. We'll also talk about potential funding, current funding and future funding on how to pay for the amenities that we'll be presenting tonight. So as I said, tonight's more about facilities and fields. It's not about programming and allocation of fields and facilities. So, I know there may be a lot of people in the audience this evening that want to talk tennis, pickleball, softball, hardball, basketball, any of the recreational types of activities, but really, again, tonight is to talk about facilities, about buildings, about fields, establishing some priorities on how we move forward with the limited dollars that we have. So, folks in the audience may not be happy, but there will be another time and place to talk about programming and allocation of resources for programming those particular So with that, and then also, as you know, we, the city right now is working in conjunction with the school district on what we call our joint use agreement, which also highlights the use of the fields, of the courts, of other amenities that we share collectively. So that also is another mechanism to talk about allocation of fields and resources, and that will be coming before the council again in the near future. So with that, we will be walking through, our new Parks and Rec Director will be walking through a timeline of how we got to this point, talk about the needs assessment report, explain the two options that we'd like to present this evening, some, as I said, funding resources, and then really open it up for discussion for the commission and the council to help us identify priorities on how to best use our resources. So with that introduction, if I can turn it over to Ally, our Parks and, oh, I'm sorry...
Actually, yeah, we're going to go back to public comments. Thank you for that, really appreciate it, Mr. George. So, we have, Madam Clerk, how many comment cards do we have?
I only have five.
Five, so if you are in the, yes?
I understand that we ran out.
Okay, got it. I'm going to poll the audience real quick. So if you would like to speak during public comments, please raise your hand. We have 30 minutes max, please take that into consideration. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, plus three or four, 15. I see another hand up, 16. So we're going to limit public comments to one minute each, given that we have so many people here and we have 30 minutes on the agenda to do so. So, Madam Clerk, let's start with the cards that you have, please.
Jerry Cody.
And I do have the timer on my phone, so unfortunately, you're going to have to hear me say time's up.
You got it. Thank you very much, it's my first time speaking, first time attending a meeting of this capacity, so I'm very happy to be here. I speak today as a resident here of El Segundo, as an avid park goer, park user of Rec Park, and as a proud parent of a student who is here, attends the El Segundo Co-op Nursery School here at the campus here at Gordon Clubhouse. I just, I'm here to speak on behalf of the school. It's our 75th anniversary this year, very proud of that, and we hope that no matter what the option that is decided upon ultimately by the council, by the staff, that the school has continued to stay there, to be incorporated there. We are very happy in this location, and we just hope that the governing body takes that into consideration. We've been here for 75 years, and we'd like to be around for another 75 more, at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cody.
Paul Rayburn.
Good evening, council members and commissioners. So I am a resident of El Segundo and a parent of three children in the school district, and I'd like to speak briefly about an issue that I believe is relevant this evening and will be more relevant at the next stage when it comes to use of specific facilities, and that is the tennis teams at the high school, the boys' and girls' teams. Given the current upgrades that are being planned and...
Undertaking.
High school, the teams are losing their tennis courts altogether. It's very unusual for a high school to have no tennis courts at all, so the plan has been for the students to use the facilities at Rec Park. That poses a problem. The tennis programs at the high school, in my understanding, have gained momentum and more interest, and now it is a critical time to ensure that resources are not taken away that will benefit the students of El Segundo. So, that's what I wanted to share.
Thank you, Mr. Rayburn, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I hate to be the Scrooge here, but if you could please limit applause, because if someone does speak and then they don't get applause, it's really not kind. So if we could limit that, please, thank you. We understand that everyone is supportive of tennis that's in this group, or most people. All right, who's up next?
Julia Perretti? Did I say that correctly?
I want to speak as someone into it, right here, okay. I'm speaking as someone who lives here and someone who also goes to El Segundo High School. We are currently losing our courts at some point this year, so we won't have anywhere to play. And if we don't, the tennis program, we will have no option to have one. And it's very important for a lot of people, we have people who are playing, who are playing like for their future, for college, and if the, if we don't have courts available here, we won't have them anywhere. And there's a lot of us who've been playing here since we were two or three, and if we lose that, we'd be losing a lot of how we grew up and, you know, access to a lot of things.
Thank you, Ms. Perretti.
Nina Kreski.
Nina Kreski, are you here?
Yeah, great.
If you could just speak into the microphone, that helps, thanks. Since our currently, El Segundo High School, our courts are going to get demolished soon, so we need, we have the courts at Rec Park right now, but if, it's just, no, like...
You're doing great.
I don't know what else to say, it's just, yeah, courts are getting demolished, and what are we supposed to do? We don't have a lot of funding in our high school athletics department, and I'm not even sure if we're going to have a tennis team continuing forward, more forwardly, but, that's about it, but it's...
Thank you, Ms. Kreski.
Nicholas Rayburn.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Rayburn. I'm 15 years old and a sophomore at El Segundo High School. I'm a member of the El Segundo High School Boys Tennis Team and also a member of the El Segundo Rec Park Teen Advisory Committee. I'd like to say a few words to let you know how important the tennis courts are at Rec Park to teens like me. First of all, in a few weeks, our ESHS tennis team will no longer have any courts at the high school anymore. This means the girls' and boys' tennis teams have all our practices and matches at Rec Park. Basically, we cannot have a tennis team at ESHS right now without the Rec Park courts. That's why it's very sad to hear that there might be plans to turn more tennis courts into pickleball courts at Rec Park. As it is, it's hard enough not to have our own courts at ESHS, and I'm sad to lose our courts at ESHS. But, and I also am jealous of other schools that have their own amazing tennis facility. But I also think that the Rec Park courts are great, and I want to make sure our team keeps playing on all six of them. I know that a lot of kids take tennis lessons at Rec Park, and it's often hard to get a court.
Time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Rayburn.
All right, we are out of cards, so if you wanted to speak and didn't fill out a card...
Yeah, if you raised your hand, over here in the, yes, I saw you first, please.
And then when you do get up there, just, if you could state your name for me, since I don't have a card.
Hello, my name is Chris Edom, 12-year resident of El Segundo. All my kids have gone to elementary and middle school here. I've been advocating for a skate park renovation since 2015. 2017, I had a local skate park building come down here and design a park that fits in the same footprint. It's visually aesthetic to the eye, it has a beginner course, intermediate, and then a bowl, it has flow and everything. I have the cost of, an estimated cost, which was done in 2017, which was $330,000, to take out the existing park and have a new one done. I've got printouts for you guys to all take a look at, before, after, now, but all the work's already done to get that skate park renovated and not look like a prison yard and not be just a trash bin, places for kids to hang out, because right now, the ramps lead to walls, it's just a bunch of benches, and even somebody on El Segundo Parents Network today had posted how filthy it is, you know?
Time is up.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Edom, if you leave those with the clerk, yeah, thank you. In the back, I see a hand up, yeah, green shirt, yes, thank you. And actually, if you'd like to speak, if you could line up behind this gentleman in the green shirt, so we can move along pretty quickly, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bruce Barish, I'm an 18-year resident of El Segundo, and Mr. George, I believe, began meeting by telling us what is not going to be discussed at this meeting in regard to allocation of resources, joint user agreements, et cetera. But I just want to be on record that, my understanding is that it goes back to 1990s, when a joint service agreement was established with the city regarding the use of tennis courts at Rec Park. And this was further emphasized after ballot measure ES was passed in 2018, the El Segundo Unified School District advised the city that they were absolutely going to exercise the priority user agreement that they believe was in place. I understand that in 2021, El Segundo administration had contacts with the city regarding this issue, but there's been nothing definitive identified. Mr. George indicated that...
Time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Barish, appreciate it.
Good afternoon, my name's Barry Deluski, I'm a resident of El Segundo since 2016. I played high school tennis and college tennis, and I think the impact college tennis can have on people are almost priceless in terms of the people you meet, opportunities you have, career opportunities that I've had that probably other people might not have had before. And the tape is not a workable solution, in my opinion. In college tennis, you only have four years to play, and I actually had injured an internal thigh muscle, my groin muscle, because I slipped on a clay court where you have different texture. So trying to change direction quickly on a different texture can actually cause your foot to slip out, and it can create some muscle strain issues. And then also, you have the playability where the ball changes pace and spin off the different lines, so it's almost impossible to play. In clay courts, you have only the lines you have to worry about, your current setup, almost the entire court is taken up by these tape, and nobody wants to play on it. So I think you guys need to come up with a different solution, and hopefully we can address some of the high school kids being able to compete with other high schools and get college scholarships.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Pigi Schiltcher, I am a resident here at El Segundo, and I have two daughters, one just graduated and played four years of high school tennis, and my younger daughter is in 10th grade now, so in her second year of tennis. And we've heard now a lot of arguments why the tennis courts are very important. I want you to put yourselves in the shoes of these girls and boys, you all have children, I assume, or most of you at least, put yourself into their shoes. They will lose their sport at the high school, they've practiced, they've worked their whole lives, pretty much, to really do this sport, to do it in high school, to apply for colleges with it, and now you're taking this away, potentially. So I assume that the decision to do the, or to rip out the high school courts was made in the best interest of the overall high school goals, which I think is fine.
Thank you, Ms. Schiltcher.
I am going to speak up because I have to hand out a few things. My name is Sergio Erika.
I don't think the video, the camera won't get you if you're not speaking to the mic, sir. Yeah, just, if you could hand it to the, yeah, that's fine, that'll work.
I own and I run the tennis academy here at the park, and the fact that there will be three entities that will use the carts, the courts, starting as soon as the courts of the high school are demolished, is going to be crazy. It's very simple. So it'll be the teams, both of them, it'll be the residents, and then will be the programs that I offer to the community since 2009. So all that is going to be impacted. Can be found a solution, temporary, maybe, maybe not, but that's going to affect everybody, and that's where I'm open for questions, discussions. Nobody has come up to me to say, hey, what do you think about this? But I'm hopeful, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Brian Domian, I've been a resident since 2015. I had a son graduate from the high school, I have two kids going through the system now, one in high school and one in the middle school. My daughter plays on the tennis team. Obviously, we beat this tennis issue to death here, but I think the most important thing is really, as a community, weigh the benefit of having pickleball courts and the loss of the tennis courts for the whole community. In my opinion, I think in everyone's opinion here, the community benefit for having these teams for the girls and boys far outweighs any potential benefit of the pickleball courts, which, quite frankly, I don't know what that benefit is, other than maybe, maybe a little monetary. But, you know, for the community, for these children to have an outlet after school, to play sports, and have a positive aspect to their lives which sports brings, is, I think, far more beneficial to the community than anything pickleball could offer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Much shorter. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracey Miller Zarniki, I am here, first of all, as a parent and resident in the community. My children, well, one in particular, has enjoyed the tennis program through Parks and Recs, so I do hope that will be allowed to continue. I am also here wearing my school board hat tonight, just to let people know who may not have been serving on the council, or in your city roles now, or on the commission, that the schools in 2016 started their investigation into the long-range facility master plan, and during that time, the idea of establishing a multi-use building on what is currently tennis courts there was part of the discussion. And early in that discussion, the city staff and school staff spoke with an assurance that if that tennis court area disappeared at the high school, we would continue our joint use agreement with the city to provide tennis facilities for the tennis team to have a place to practice in our hometown. So I just wanted to let you know, if you didn't know that background, and of course, we are willing to help figure out the solution and timing and all of that.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarniki.
Hi, my name is Gregory Phillips. I'm a tennis enthusiast, like some of the people knowing here, like Barry. So my thing is, you know, you've got the volleyball courts, you've got the paddle tennis courts, you've got other options to extend the pickleball, so you can have a consistent marketing thing there. And then tennis, as a tradition, builds so much camaraderie and good feeling amongst all the people who participate in it, who come out here every day and look forward to it, who have a joy in their heart and a smile on their face, because they got to play their two hours and whatever they were doing. And so to inflict and to go in and affect that for a revenue purpose, to take a certain court away or make another court away or something, I think is kind of, you know, short-sighted when you've got other areas you could permanently place pickleball into, which creates a better revenue stream, because you consistently, more consistently market that, it's available, it's physically seen, and I come in here and I don't see anybody on the volleyball courts, I don't see anybody on that paddleball court, those just sit empty. And that, so it doesn't make sense to take tennis courts away when you've got that there.
Time is up.
Plus, you know, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jamie Sanchez, I've lived here in El Segundo for 30-plus years. My oldest daughter went through the schools here, graduated as a teacher in Wiseburn right now. She played tennis four years, she also played softball. My statement is coming from me in regards to tennis, I don't know if you, somebody last night asked me, tennis hasn't really been that big here in El Segundo, so I want to share something with you. In 1994, Southern California Tennis Association named this the Facility of the Year, so with all the activity that was involved in it. So tennis has been a pretty, pretty big, important part of El Segundo. My statement to you is that I am here making myself available to try and come up with solutions to the situations we're in, because I think that obviously we can work together in doing this, but I think that there needs to be better communication between your entity and the one behind me. I just heard recently that the courts are going to be closed at El Segundo.
Time is up.
There were no courts, and they're moving here.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Hall, I'm an El Segundo resident. At the risk of being booed out of the room, I play pickleball and very much enjoy doing so. I mostly came here to thank the commission and Sean for working with us to open up Tuesday nights, so our group could get back together and play more frequently, but I would just say, I don't think that anyone on either side is trying to get rid of anyone's fun. I certainly don't want the tennis teams not to be able to play, or for people to miss out on that. I think it's important to find an opportunity for everyone. I know it's challenging at times to find pickleball courts, it sounds like it's hard to find tennis courts, and it seems like there should be some opportunity to make both sides happy over time, rather than where I think we are right now, where everyone's kind of afraid they're going to lose their courts or not be able to find space, so that's my...
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Chrissy Cale, moved here about 30 years ago, and the number one reason we moved to this town was because of the tennis courts. Growing up and playing tennis out of New Mexico and coming into town, coming out and seeing the tennis courts without a fence up and having a real net was a big benefit to why we moved to this town. My daughter is now a freshman, and coming out on the team for the first time, it's surprising that there's not a JV squad or more locations that they can play and continue, and it's also surprising because my kids have grown up on both working with Jamie and with Sergio, thank you, working with Sergio. And so it's also very important to keep the city in focus and supporting the tennis as it goes around. I love pickleball, we need to find locations for pickleball as well, it's a fun sport to also participate in, so, rooftops, looking for other areas to build and expand into, I think would be a great idea.
Thank you, Ms. Cale. Okay, we're about, how are we doing, Madam Clerk, on time? Do we hit our 30-minute mark, or we, not quite, right? Couple more, and, anyone else who'd like to speak, yes, please.
Five minutes.
Good evening, my name's Karen Prohl, I moved to El Segundo in 1998. We've been playing tennis here on Monday, Thursday, and Saturday for years, and if you want to be equal to everyone, taking tennis courts away and giving it to someone else is not equality. There are a lot of issues with registration and all, but most of all, we want to play tennis. Please keep our tennis courts open. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prohl. Okay, that concludes public comments. Mr. George, as is per usual, would you like to comment on any of the public comments?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And first of all, I want to thank everyone for their feedback and their very articulate ways of communicating here to the council and the commission and staff. And I, we have a bunch of staff here, in fact, I think all of the Parks and Rec staff is here, we've been taking copious notes, as have I, and, you know, as your relatively new city manager, there's a number of things that I need to follow up on with people. I'd like to, certainly like to get a copy of the skate park plan that was previously done, would be wonderful to take a look at. Someone, one of the speakers had mentioned a priority user agreement. I'd like to know, or get a copy of that, or find out, you know, and we'll check our staff in terms of this priority user agreement that was mentioned. And then, there was also mentioned a particular agreement or plan that was done in 2016, we'll certainly follow up on that. The only other thing I'd like to add is, again, whether it's tennis, pickleball, softball, hardball, basketball, a lot of that discussion can take place after this meeting. As I mentioned earlier, the joint use agreement with the school district is reaching its expiration now after 10 years. A lot has happened in 10 years since that agreement was put together. It expires the end of next month, and we are in the process right now of re-engaging that, renegotiating that agreement, and that will be before the council sets. That's another opportunity for people, I think, more specifically, to talk about programming and allocation of park space. So, and then also, down the road too, maybe a larger discussion about pickleball and tennis, and that seems, certainly seems to be an issue that needs further discussion. So again, I want to thank everyone for their comments, and I look forward to the dialogue tonight regarding facilities and priorities moving forward. Thank you.
I have a, just clarification question.
Yes.
The joint use agreement that we have been talking about a lot the last couple of months, and that we are going to be renegotiating, that has been a 10-year agreement historically, and we're asking for a one-year agreement. Part of that rationale is because there are things in flux, both of the school district and the city, and this is a perfect example. Are the tennis courts currently in the joint use agreement? And if not, we should certainly make sure.
Absolutely, and, you know, the agreement that was put together 10 years ago, and I don't know, unless Ally can answer this question, specifically, does it call out tennis courts? I don't 100% know, I know it, Ally?
Yes, so the agreement does reference several of the facilities and amenities, however, what it doesn't do is specify how much use, what times, et cetera. So I think that's something we need to consider moving forward, maybe an amendment yearly to talk about what the use is going to be, might be a good idea.
So is that specificity about use going to be in this one-year extension? Are we likely to get that in there?
Absolutely, now that we've, well, again, the recommendation of the one-year extension will be coming before the council, and might as well let you know that now, and that will give us the opportunity to really tighten things up in terms of programming and those shared amenities that we use between the school and the city, and items like our Parks and Rec Director is identifying, it really does need to be tightened up, because, again, a lot has happened in 10 years, and a lot moving forward will change also.
Okay, and then, just to be clear, the city council has not made any decision related to tennis courts outside of making some adjustments to allow for pickle... to tennis courts outside of making some adjustments to allow for pickleball over the last couple of years? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Drew. Yeah, Councilman Drew.
Yeah, I know this is kind of a hot-button issue, but one thing I just want to bring up is that one sport does not have to expand at the expense of another sport. I don't think anyone is stating that. I'm not sure quite how the rhetoric came across that we were taking your tennis courts away. There's a lot of discussion that you hear, but I can assure you, this is the first meeting that we have had about anything to do with this. There has been nothing decided, there has been no data given, there's been nothing like that. So I ask that you understand that, especially the students, every one of us up here either has a child in school, graduated from the school, or is coming up into the school. We are not in a situation where we're looking to take anything away from anyone. But you also have to understand that as a city, we do have to look at what is in the best interest of the community in addition to that. So it's a combination of things, that's all I'm saying, but the, we're not looking to take anything away from anyone. So I wouldn't be too concerned about that at this point in time, but I do really appreciate you coming in and letting us know things that maybe we didn't know before you did come in. Thank you.
Public comments are over. Thank you, though. We can talk to the city manager. Daryl will be happy to talk to you, I'm sure. Anyone from Recs and Park Commission that would like to speak after public comments?
I don't.
Okay. I don't think so. It's hard to see you guys. Next time, we'll do a U. This is a little tough, way down there. All right, so, Mr. George, we have, not, all right, now, let's just get through this part. Oh, yeah, sorry. Commissioner, yeah, Stolnack.
Well, Drew, I think that because tennis is ramping up in their season, I don't think that we can let this go on too long because, you know, the kids are having practices and matches will be coming up soon. So it needs to be something that's going to need to be addressed for their upcoming season. So it's, you know, they need to have use of the courts, and, you know, it, there needs to be something that's going to need to be decided soon.
Yeah, I agree. Mr. George, what's the timing on that?
You know, I'd really like to know what the timing is on the demolition of the courts at the high school. But what is the timing on that? I have not been made aware. Have you?
I do not. While we're waiting for someone from the school district to come up, I would also say that, you know, in the past, maybe not this council, but other councils, have been accused of skipping over certain commissions to make decisions. And so with that said, is this the type of item that you would like to hear at your commission before it came before the council? And if so, just because this item is not on the agenda tonight, so we cannot discuss it tonight legally.
Correct.
Right? And so if it's the kind of thing that you guys would like to discuss at your commission level, then it can be placed on your next commission agenda and then on the following council agenda with time allowing. And unfortunately, that's the public process, that's the, you know, if you want to bang your head against the wall, come sit up here. It's fun. But it's, that's up to you guys.
I mean, it's important to me, but I'm going to be out of the country for the September meeting, so I hope it's important to the other commissioners. But I think it's something that needs to be dealt with now because the tennis team is ramping up for their season.
Let's get to dates. The first date being the demolition from the school district, the second date being when the tennis team needs to start practicing the facilities. That would help our decision.
Yeah.
And I think.
I can certainly connect with the.
Again, it's not on the agenda, so is that something?
I can connect with the superintendent in the morning.
And is it, is it possible to get a preliminary update on Tuesday's council? I mean, we still have time to post on the agenda.
Absolutely. We'll update the council on Tuesday.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Councilman Drew.
One quick thing, I think, clarification I did hear about this today. The courts at Rec Park are CIF certified, is that correct? Somebody can nod at me. I know the ones at the high school were not, but CIF events can only be played in El Segundo on the Rec Park courts. Is that, is that fair to say? And it's needed at 5:00 or all 6:00? Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, I think we're good. Mr. George, take it away, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, with that, we will, I'll turn it over to our Parks and Rec Director, Ally Mancini, for the presentation of the PowerPoint.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Boils and members of the city council, Chair Moda and members of the Parks and Recreation Commission, city manager, staff, and community members. My name is Ally Mancini, and I have the privilege of serving as the Director of Recreation Parks and Libraries for the City of El Segundo. Before I begin my presentation this evening, I'd like to take a quick moment to introduce my amazing staff team. Several of them have joined us this evening, including Recreation Superintendent Arisia Hester, Recreation Supervisor Rachel Cummings, maybe you guys could just raise your hand, Recreation Supervisor Shawn Green, Recreation Supervisor Ryan Delgado, Recreation Supervisor Linnea Palmer, Senior Administrative Specialist Brandy Thornton, Recreation Coordinator Devon Zamora, and Recreation Coordinator Joe Lormins. Thank you for attending and for your support. Tonight, we are here to continue a conversation about the future of Recreation Park. To provide some background, Recreation Park was constructed back in the 1950s and included ballfields, tennis and basketball courts, concession stands, and a two-story clubhouse. Over the years, many other amenities and facilities have been added to serve the community, including the checkout building in 1961, the Jocelyn Center, where we're sitting this evening in 1966, and the Teen Center in 1980. This beloved community park has been serving the residents of El Segundo for close to 75 years. Those of us who know the park well and use the park regularly know that it is in need of some renovations and updates to continue to meet the needs of this community. Tonight's meeting will include a historical look at why we are here today for this important meeting, a high-level overview of feedback from the Recreation Needs Assessment that was presented to the council back in November 2021, an overview of two options that staff would like the council and commission to consider for moving ahead, a short overview of funding, and a discussion on some hot topics related to the park that ought to be considered when making priorities for the future. To begin, let's take a look at the history of this project. The city council began talking about allocating funding for the Teen Center improvements as early as 2019, possibly earlier than that. At the time, however, the council decided it would be best to take a higher-level look at the needs of the entire park versus focusing just on the Teen Center. As such, a consulting firm was hired in 2021 to conduct a Recreation Park Needs Assessment. The Needs Assessment Team conducted community surveys, stakeholder interviews, and gathered data about the uses of the facilities, the conditions of the facilities, and what might best serve the community in the future. A draft document was presented to the council in November 2021. At that meeting, it was clear that the council felt the document lacked the clarity it needed to project a clear path forward. The council then asked that staff schedule a future joint meeting of the council and commission to take a deeper look at options for the future of the park. Since that time, there have been changes in city administration, including the appointment of a new city manager, Mr. George, and the appointment of myself as the new Recreation Parks and Library Director. Since I started the job in June of 2022, I have been working diligently alongside staff to dig deeper into the needs assessment and to solicit additional feedback about the document's proposed recommendations. I've talked with park staff, recreation staff, the interim Community Services Director John Jones, city manager Daryl George, public works directors, and others to present to you this evening with two options for moving ahead. Before we do that, let's take a quick glimpse at some of the most relevant feedback that came out of the Needs Assessment. Recreation Park is by far the highest-use park in the city. In fact, 50% of those surveyed indicated that they use Recreation Park more than any other community facility, and 31% indicated that they visit the park more than once a week. The buildings, fields, and courts are in need of significant renovation and repair. All of the buildings are at least 40 years old and have been impacted by heavy use. There is a need for more sports courts or for a conversion of some courts into multi-use courts. Tennis and pickleball users place a high value of having these courts in their community and would like to see more courts for the public's use. And the community would like to see nicer picnic areas, better lighting, new restrooms, and ADA-compliant walkways. This slide gives a summary of the annual uses of the park. These statistics capture significant uses but do not include drop-in and passive use. You can see on the slide that every single amenity is being used by residents and non-residents to recreate. Our fields and courts are, in particular, are so highly used that it is often difficult to meet the needs of the residents who wish to use these spaces. We also have instructors who use the space to provide lessons, private rentals, tournaments, and exhibitions. And now I'd like to review the two options staff would like some direction on to move ahead with some of these much-needed renovations.
Mrs. Mancini, just, I'm sorry to interrupt. From a procedural standpoint, is it okay to interject with questions, or would you like us to wait till you're done with the presentation?
Mr. George, what would you prefer?
No, by all means, ask.
Okay, Councilman Nicol has a question, I believe.
On that previous slide, if we can go back one. Are we saying that Stevenson, Brett, and softball are available for 2,800 hours of rent annually, or are we saying that every single one actually has the exact same amount of rental hours charged?
So I asked the staff to provide an estimate of what the use is and to give me an average, and those were the hours provided, 2,800 hours of rental use for each of the fields.
So we don't actually know, we don't know how much each field is used?
I'd have to ask one of my staff if they could comment on that.
Yeah, Councilman Nicol, I just want to add on to that. That's a great point, because in the past, we have asked for field utilization as a metric. So if you think about campus, similar problem, campus, similar opportunity. Campus El Segundo is locked for a greater part of the day. And utilization, I think when we rolled out Rec 1, was that the end of that? I think part of the functionality that was discussed, and I thought was going to be available, but maybe not, was the ability to track utilization of fields and then report back on a metric.
Correct.
So if not, that's something that we should be looking into in the future so that we actually know what our asset utilization is like. And school district, too, would be great.
We can certainly get that information.
I don't think that the field reservations go through Rec 1. I think they are taken out of that process and are done separately.
Yeah, I'm less interested, Ms. Watson, in the reservations, more so in actual use by sport.
Yeah, but she's saying it may not be through.
Oh, yeah, gotcha. So it does not have, you're saying it doesn't have that ability?
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying that.
They're not using it for the sport.
Oh, wait, Mrs. Watson, can you clarify then? Just, can you maybe, I know you were involved in that committee.
Softball has the ability, they're not using it for that, so the hours are not tracked because all of those reservations are taken offline.
Gotcha. But is it, you can track reservations or actual reservations and use? Do you know? Okay, something to discuss with staff later, I think. Thank you. Councilman Drew.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just want to say, the girls' rec park softball field is the most-used field in this entire city. So I cannot imagine that there is an equal amount of use on Stevenson, nor do I believe Stevenson is even available to be rented out, from what I've seen on the website. It is either, it's either the school or Babe Ruth, from my understanding. Is that, am I accurate on that? Girls' softball field is 24/7. If it was open all night, it would be used all night.
Well, and I think too, to that point, Ally, I don't mean to belabor this at all, but, you know, when a field is reservation-only, right, it's technically not public open space.
Correct.
And so when we start talking about how is the park used, it's like, when I look at this, it's like, great. So Stevenson, Brett, and softball typically are used primarily by children that are members of user groups, AYSO, Little League, Babe Ruth, or a high school team. But, you know, I mean, I know softball, there's adult co-ed leagues that play out there, and there's kickball out there.
Correct.
Things like that. But by and large, if, you know, you're just somebody that wants to come down to the park and play, you're not utilizing those fields. And so I don't think that gives us a very good snapshot as to how the community uses it. That's how the user groups use it, as the community use the park.
Right. Okay.
Thanks.
That helps us moving forward. Thank you.
Now you got to figure out where you were.
Okay, now I know. So, going back, option one, so we're going to take a look at option one here. Option one utilizes a phased approach to begin completing renovations of existing facilities and amenities while keeping the same layout of the park. Staff recommends initiating the renovation of the Teen Center, Skate Park, and Basketball Courts as the first priority project in option one. The benefits, the pros of option one include retaining the layout and feel of Recreation Park and keeping that nostalgic connection to what El Segundo residents know and love. It also allows the city to use a phased approach to identify projects based on needs and funding available. And finally, each of these buildings would retain their independence and would be renovated to meet the specific needs of the user groups. For example, the teens at the Teen Center and the seniors here at the Jocelyn Center. So up on the slide here, you see, this is a look at some of the priority projects identified for option one. These aren't in any particular order, but they do include several of the facilities and amenities that we mentioned here tonight. We have also provided cost estimates for renovations and updates. Option two focuses on reconfiguring the footprint of the park, demolishing existing buildings, and constructing a new multi-use, multi-level community center. Some of the benefits of this option would include, the community would gain a brand-new, state-of-the-art, multi-use, multi-level community center that would likely require less staffing. The demo of the older buildings would also open up additional space for future amenities or facilities. This slide shows the approximate costs of demoing the older buildings to construct a new building and to make much-needed renovations to the other park amenities. Again, I'd like to stress that these are ballpark estimates based on information from the Needs Assessment and information gathered from public works and parks staff.
Sorry, Ally, question. On these priority projects, I'm looking at some of the way the descriptions are. Is that just taken from the Needs Assessment language? Because I'm looking at addition of a dog park in the middle of.
Some of it was, yes, sir.
Probably not. Okay.
Yes, sir.
So we'd have to get into a little bit more detail if and when the time comes.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct. This slide lists other projects in the park that need to be considered with option one or option two. These projects can be done as funding is acquired or be tied into one of the larger projects. So these are, this was, some of the other feedback we got from the community on some of the maybe smaller ticket items that aren't as flashy but that are definitely needed, wayfinding signage, renovating perhaps the picnic areas and the fire pits, updating the walkways, and things of that nature. Now let's take a look at the funding. Currently, the city has in reserves for park, Recreation Park projects, $1 million. Funding for Brett Field snack bar and restroom renovation, $350,000. There are carryover appropriations for the Teen Center, the court, and the Skate Park renovation in the amount of $750,000. Some of that money has been used for the Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment. We also have carryover appropriations for renovation of the checkout building restroom renovation, which, as you all know, is underway now. There's $491,000 set aside for that, and $34,000 has been used to date. We also will have Measure A funding. That is an amount that we get from the county annually for a period of five years. We'll have about $500,000 at the end of '23-'24 to also be utilized for park projects. For the city to fully fund the projects, the priority projects in option one or option two, the council would likely need to either tap into reserves or consider a bond issued by the city in an amount to be determined by the city council. And the last slide in my presentation highlights some discussion considerations that fall into sort of a list of hot topics that the staff have been currently faced with, many of them which you heard this evening. The heavy use, the heavy use and need for field and sports courts. The council may consider several policy decisions to address these issues or direct staff to work further with the commission to study these challenges and potential solutions. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council or the commissioners might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mancini. I got a quick question, then I'll turn it over to my colleagues on the commission and the council.
Yes, Mayor.
The Measure A funding?
Yes.
Is that 2.5 then in total? The 500 a year for five years?
No, I, no, it's, in total, it'll be about $500,000. We get about $100,000 a year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's hear from the commission.
Yeah, good idea. Let's hear, let's hear from the Wrexham Park Commission.
Yeah, I just had a question. I noticed that on the two comparison options, there are a number of things that are on both of them, so I was just trying to quickly do the math that there's a delta in cost, but some of these things are duplicated. So what's the actual delta in cost between the two projects?
I think the most significant delta would be in building a new building. So there's about a $10 million difference. If we wanted to construct a new multi-level, multi-use facility, it would probably cost us anywhere between 15 and 20 million dollars.
Right. So what's interesting is that I remember that when this last came to the commission, we were told it was going to cost more to take down the buildings than, or sorry, to renovate the buildings than it would to take them down and build the new center. But it doesn't look like that's how this is netted out. In fact, the option to renovate the buildings now looks a lot more attractive, particularly because some of these other pieces are showing up on both.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Very interesting. Thank you.
Because when we're talking about building the new building, we have to remember, we also have to do the demo of the facilities that are already here. We're going to also end up with space that likely the community is going to expect that we add more amenities. So overall, the cost would be much higher.
So can you get clarification to what Ms. Watson was talking about? Because when we did receive that presentation, it was clear that it was going to cost us more to renovate. So I just want to really make sure we clearly understand that, that difference, and why all of a sudden there's a shift.
I can elaborate on, so.
Just for everyone's information, this is our Public Works Director.
Right.
Elias Sassoon.
Name is Elias Sassoon, Public Works Director. So in summary, what happened when the consulting firm submitted the report, when they, when they reported the estimated cost for the new building, they did not include a lot of things, including demolition, including environmental analysis, including contaminations that might be there that we need to get rid of, design, soft costs, design, inspection. So a lot of those were not included. So by the time we added those, the numbers really didn't work out like it did. So this is a summary explanation.
Yes, if I remember correctly, they estimated about $9 million for a new building.
That's right.
Simply not possible. Not, not to the, to the, to the way in which it was described, and as Mr. Elias said, some of those soft costs weren't included.
Well, frankly, as I raised in that meeting, a lot of their numbers didn't add up the way they statistically evaluated the usership and everything. I mean, I think I had a bit of a meltdown that night because none of this stuff was adding up, so this is, this is much more encouraging.
I'm glad to hear that. I did, I did work closely with Mr. Sassoon and Christopher, our parks maintenance, and we also did look at numbers from the needs assessment, and we, we sort of jived together and came up with what we felt were fair approximate, again, approximations. You know, depending on what sort of renovations we really wanted to do to the Jocelyn Center, we might spend $4 million. But these were numbers we felt were reasonable to take us into the next 15 or so years.
So we're not continuing on work with this consulting company, correct? This is.
That is correct. The agreement has expired.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, and then the other clarification I want to make is that, so you have, we have two options. Option one is to take a phased approach to renovating our park, to, you know, prioritize certain areas, areas that need, areas that need fixing quickly, and then phase it, that phased approach, and eventually maybe get to the clubhouse, and at that time, we may have money where we could do a double-story building.
Right.
And in that phased approach, we don't have to exactly do everything that's, the way it's packaged here.
Right.
We have the ability to choose and pick depending on, because one of the things I was very concerned about, if we did do the Big Bang approach, which was option two, is that, you know, our parks and recs have been closed for two years due to COVID. You know, I would hate to see the parks get closed again for another three years because of a major renovation. So I think, you know, looking at the phased approach is a great option, and we just need to make sure we're cognizant of how we do that to ensure we get our Big Bang for our buck quickly.
Right.
And that we ensure that people have the ability to continue to use the park now that they're back at the park.
Exactly. I think that's one of the main benefits, is that we'll be able to continue to use the park, and we can identify, whether that be the council or the commission does that, we can identify what those priorities are and the funding that we have available or that we know is going to be coming online. So it kind of gives us a little more flexibility to be realistic, but to see action. So, yeah.
I love technology. I'm just going to put that out there. So I searched through my old agendas for Gordon Clubhouse, and I see on October 13th of last year, we were given a bid from RJM Design Group to rebuild the entire clubhouse, renovate the entire thing, $13,676,000. So the cost went up by $7 million in less than a year?
As I indicated, that $13 million did not include the soft costs. It did not include any of this stuff.
Seven million dollars of soft costs?
Yes, because you're looking at typically 10% to 12%, maybe sometimes 15% by the time you look at demolition, you, you know, and the contamination. So those were not included in the cost.
I'm in the wrong business.
But that's, but still, seven additional million dollars is 50%. You're saying that there's.
Well, yeah, by the time that, that you add the soft costs and the costs that were not included, the demolition was not included, the contamination was not included.
That's right here. The demolition and removal of the clubhouse and surrounding hardscape, $151,200. I mean, it was there. I mean, it, I don't know, I'm happy to share this with you, but this was something that was presented to us less than a year ago.
Right.
That we talked about. I'm just, you know, when you see $20 million on a line item in a presentation like this to the community, you start asking, well, that's, that doesn't jive with what we've been told and money spent. Because this was a consultant. We paid for someone to put this together, didn't we?
Also, in the, I had some comments on the cost of the building itself. He used a lower number per cost per square foot. He did not include the fact that we may have to have elevators in the building. The elevator itself is about $2 million. He didn't have that cost.
If I, if I remember correctly, that, that facility was not multi-generational, was it?
It says it right here.
I'm not sure we're talking apples to apples.
Because I don't think it had elevators.
Here's the thing, regardless, we have to go through a very.
Multigeneration.
Councilman Nicol, just regardless, not, I just, we have a very, I don't think the public knows this, we have a very strict process that we have to follow, just like the school district. We have to go out to bid, we have to pay prevailing wages, which add a lot of costs. And I can tell you, having just built a building, costs are way higher just in 18 months than they were previously. And regardless, the number's the number. I mean, maybe it was misstated earlier, but it, I mean, I trust our process and that we have to go out to bid and get those bids. So it's a big number.
But I will also say those numbers affect how people choose to vote, right? And how if we're going to have a discussion on what direction we're going and we're looking at numbers like that, that could change someone's decision on how to direct funds. I just, you know, I'm sitting up here and looking at that and thinking like, okay, how is, like, if it really has doubled, or if it's gone up by 150%, well then, that's something we need to know.
Let me, let me add also, this, the $20 million is not even a lead building. In other words, if you want to make it lead, it'll be $5 million more. I looked into that myself. And, you know, we as a, as a city, being a role model, we want to get into lead buildings. So I just want you to know, I did review this very thoroughly with, with the help of, of the city staff. So what I'm telling you is based on the most current cost estimates of similar buildings.
Real quick, if I could ask a quick question, Director Sassoon. We're looking at this, and I did the quick math on option one, option two off the agenda, and I got $14 million for option one, $28 million for option two with what's there. Do you have an estimate of what the current numbers would be, or are those pretty accurate?
I feel, I feel based on what we, what we have, I feel these, these numbers are as accurate as you can get. And, and frankly, it's not very, very accurate, but the ballpark, I feel comfortable.
And the current estimate as opposed to the past?
Yes.
We're here to look at option one, option two. I think it's important that we know what those, the closest numbers are that we could get.
I guarantee you, if not more than twice, it'll be at least, at least twice more expensive to go with option two.
Just to clarify too, we don't need the entire option one or the entire option two. We could take any subset of either one or both as well.
Exactly.
Correct.
And as we move forward, as Councilmember Pristic stated, a phased approach, I mean, as we, you know, from day one, we start bidding each of these elements out, we'll get the real numbers, obviously. Tonight, it's just for purposes of generalizing an estimate. We worked with Public Works, but as we move forward with the different phases, we will, you know, we'll get those numbers in reality as we bid each phase out and then adjust accordingly.
So I just want to, just for clarify, for clarify, we really need to make a decision tonight on which option to move forward with so that we can move forward. Because at this juncture, I feel we're not moving forward because we're, we're kind of holding, are we doing the multi, do the general, the multi-use generational building? Or are we going to renovate what we have? So I think if we can walk away tonight with a decision on option one or option two, then we can fine-tune that, whatever decision it is, as we go forward. But we do need to move forward because at this point, we've been sitting on this now for nine months or so, and I just, we need to keep moving.
And I think, I think that's what we were trying to do. That's what I heard loud and clear in the meeting back in November, was that we have been sitting for too long and we need to move.
Yeah.
Will some of these numbers change? Yes. Might they be higher? Yes. But this was the best cost estimate we came up with and realistic based on the needs that we think are immediate and that we can move on quickly.
So the last, previous council meeting, I think we all kind of agreed that one of the things, the more frustrating things about making these long-range, 25-year, 10-year decisions is that none of us are around to actually see any of it actually happen. So we have funding to get things done, so I'm going to show my hand right now and say I want option one because we need a phased-in approach. And we need to get things done now. We have funding to get it done now, and I believe it's time to show something for it. Councilmember Nicol, I know you've been frustrated about the bathrooms at Brett Field for the entire four years you've been on here. You mentioned that? So I, I think, to me, that makes the most sense because we just have to start showing some progress and start, instead of having these consultants come here and tell us what we should be doing 20 years down the road who have no idea what this, what the community's about.
Thank you, Councilman Drew. Mr., Chair Moda, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. My opinion is same as Ms. Lance's, we got to go with option one. We need to do something now, not wait till tomorrow. And we can't close this park down. So definitely, it's option one.
Thank you, Chair Moda.
One of the things I noticed that, you know, RJM did bring up is just about all the services and all the programming that we run out of the current facilities, meaning the buildings, and I'll leave the courts out of it and fields, is that we are meeting the needs of the public to a large extent. These facilities, these buildings are big enough and they are able to do it, they are just outdated. So that when we look at doing something, we're not going to gain any real services for spending twice as much money to have a pretty building, which I'm, I'm all for for the most part, but not at twice the cost. And I would have to go with everyone else and say, if we can start moving forward and updating some structures in a progressive manner, option one is what I would, I don't see option two as being viable financially or giving any benefit to the community. So just my, you know, understanding of it as I see it.
Thank you, Commissioner Daley.
And same thing, I don't look at it just as a cost factor. I look at it as how this community has been, how the community operates, and I like to keep the groups, and I think the groups want to stay separate. The seniors have their area, the teens have their area, and I don't think they want to mix, you know? The teens don't want to hang out with the seniors, and the seniors don't want to hang out with the teens. And it's, this is how it's been, and I think this is how it ought to stay. And let's just renovate our buildings, bring them up to date, and move on. Let's not close the park down. Let's just renovate the buildings, and let's get things done now. Let's move on.
Thank you, Commissioner Stolnack. May I ask a clarifying question on a couple items?
Yes, Mayor.
The irrigation system, walk us through what that includes.
I'll ask my good friend, Mr. Sassoon.
And then if we've considered turf anywhere.
Sure. So, so in my limited time that I've been here, I've noticed irrigation is really not functioning properly. It's very old. A lot of pipes have been replaced, the valves are not really in a good working conditions. There are areas that you end up watering more. It's very hard to keep up with. The new technology would allow you to install irrigation system that is much more smart than, than what we've got. It, it tells you when the water needs to come on and when it needs to shut off. And it also provides you the state of art for, for, for water consumption, which we do not have today. So it includes a new irrigation system, new lines, new valves, new controllers. The new controllers would allow a person with a laptop to be able to detect if there's any issue. They don't even have to be at the site. And it, and it could tell you if there was, if there is any problem. So the technology today, it's really amazing what, how far we've come along. It's really scary. So this, this irrigation system by far, in my humble opinion, is something that we need to look at because it saves water, it saves a lot of headache, it allows much better fields, if I may add. This, the, the fields are, are built based on a lot of field that contractors brought in over the years. It was, it was junk that they wanted to get rid of. So there is really not a nutritious in the top two feet. So it's really hard to grow a green grass. It's really, really difficult, if not impossible. It doesn't matter if you fertilize it. The nutritions are not there. So one of the things could be done is the top two feet or two and a half feet, it needs to be taken off, removed, new dirt, new nice topsoil brought in. Underneath it, we could do things to help with drainage, because drainage is a big issue there. And, and then put the irrigation system. That would overhaul these fields. I do not recommend utilizing the synthetic because it is a public, unlike our soccer fields, this is public. I do not, I do not recommend we use the synthetic green fields.
Nowhere, anywhere on the park.
Right. I really think we need to go forward with, with, while we add it, change the soil, have a nice design, good grading, drainage, irrigation system that is, is really going to help out environmentally as well.
Thank you for that. Don't go too far, I got another question.
You're in the hot seat, Eli.
We heard from a constituent who's been an advocate for the skate park for years, and I have as well. And so the 750 to include the skate park, the basketball court, and the teen center seems a bit aggressive. So I think we need to revisit that number. I don't think 750 is going to do it.
I do agree. Yes, sir.
I also don't, I just want to state my opinion that we don't, I don't think we can bite off all this at once.
Correct.
We've been working really hard for the last six years to address our fiscal deficit, bring our pensions down, establish a pension trust fund, negotiate with public safety, work on the finances, the nuts and bolts of this city with about $65 million of unfunded recreation park and other city projects, last count, when that number's grown since then, because that was pre-pandemic, I'm pretty sure. So I would recommend we not do any of the buildings for now. I also have concerns about getting into a Gordon Clubhouse for $3 million and then opening up walls and realizing we have major issues we have to contend with, either from an environmental asbestos standpoint or bathroom ADA compliance, et cetera. I get concerned about that. I also, but I totally believe in 1A through 1E, as long as we sharpen the pencil on some of those numbers, particularly the teen center, skate park, and basketball court. So that's, thank you for that, and I'm sure there'll be other questions from.
Can I make one more comment if you don't mind? We applied to get some grants for irrigation, but because, you know, we are a very affluent community, we were not selected, but we tried. So this is one time you pay for being affluent community and pretty well off. I just want to make that point. The other thing that I would like to really, if, if I have the blessing, would like to highlight is under ancillary projects, replacing the, the lighting, these lightings we have are not LED. I highly recommend that we would replace them with LED because that saves energy. It, in the long run, it's going to pay for itself, frankly, and it is environmental. So I highly recommend we do that as well.
Councilman Drew.
Yeah, just kind of piggybacking on what you said, Drew. I'm with you on. Yeah, just kind of piggybacking on what you said, Drew, I'm with you on some of those. I would definitely think that 1F is going to be a very important piece of it. And, and the reason is, we do have a lot of space in that, in that area out there with lawn bowling and cornhole areas that just don't get used anymore, that, that's just dead space. So, we have room to be able to do the things we want to do and still protect the courts that we have. So I, I do think that's an important one to address right away because it's obviously with the amount of people you have here, it's an area of need. So I, I do think that's an important one in that mix, but I, I get what you're saying on some of these other buildings to put that off.
Thank you.
I have a question about the sport courts, the 1C, because one of the comments from the public tonight was something about losing courts or converting them to, something about non-clay surface. And I'm wondering where that rumor came from and does that, is there something in here that, that is code for we're changing the surface and that's why the group is upset?
I really don't know where that rumor came from.
I'll answer.
Please.
It's Court Six, which has tape from pickleball. He's talking about that you can't play tennis on a court that you have pickleball and tennis at the same time.
So I had a similar question when he said that, and I wanted to ask it during public comment, I wasn't sure. So if there's painted lines in the middle of the court, is that the same kind of traction issue as tape? Yes or no? You can give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Do you want to, you've already called out, if you don't mind, sir, just step up to the mic, please, thank you.
I think it depends on the paint. If you go to a reputable source, I'm sure they could figure out how to do that. But I think going to Major Boyle's comment about CIF compliance, I think it might be an issue if you were to paint a court with those different lines, it may not be CIF compliant for high school tennis.
Got it, thank you.
And then, it wasn't about clay, it was just having that lines that you slip, it's not related to clay, it's about the tape itself.
Okay.
I had experience with clay, which is very similar.
Really quickly on that, CIF compliance is only for a CIF match at postseason. You can play on non-CIF approved courts the entire year. It's once you get to the playoffs. So we're talking about a one or two match per year. Just, I mean, I don't think this, that's a major issue in this.
That's if they make the playoff.
Right.
Thank you, Councilmember, or Commissioner Loobz. I just promoted you.
While I'm up, so I also support option one. And one of the reasons I support option one is because, Drew, you just listed a bunch of city priorities, and those would have gotten in the way of trying to come up with 20 or 30 or 40 million dollars for that building. And so I think the way to get this done for the community members is to do the piecemeal. But the one thing I, I pause a little bit when I hear you guys discuss it is, how do we make sure that it continues to, these continue to be priorities? Because I could see four or five years down the road, maybe two of them are knocked off or three, but I, I think we need a time, a hope for, or, or, you know, some sort of timeline and a prioritization, otherwise it could just get forgotten again. It could, you know, whatever's last on this list might be 10 years down the road. And that's, my one concern is that the last couple don't get done, so I don't know how council does that.
That's a great point, Commissioner Loobz. Just, just if I can just give an overview, having done this with Councilmember Prustik the last six years, typically we do a strategic planning session. We review as a council and staff's participation, everything we want to get done in the year aligned with our five strategic priorities, which haven't changed for five... Yeah, the priorities haven't changed for like five, six years. Then we go through an exercise, Dave, where we go through all of the capital needs. We actually get the CPAC committee involved with that as well. They go through, they do a first pass, they prioritize what they think are the projects, then we go through them. And I would say probably half of those have been recreation-focused projects that we need to address, that have been on the list, that keeps getting added to. Finally, we have an opportunity to knock a couple substantial ones off, but it's been a long list that we addressed every year. So it's in the minutes and everything else, too.
I would also like to support, because we, it's in most need, and we've been talking about the longest, I'd like to support the teen center being the first priority.
Mr. George, thank you.
Well, if I could just suggest, in listening to both the commission and the council, and you're right, in terms of, of how we get through the list, I'd like to recommend that we, we go back, I meet, work with Public Works and our finance director, in terms of coming up with a phased appro, now that I hear the, option one is the preferred option, we can, and I'm just looking, just talking aloud, like 1A, B, D, E, and F seem to be at the top of the list. Maybe we can come back with a, a strategy identifying that as a phase one, and we'll kind of tighten the numbers on that. Because I do think, you know, in my, my earlier conversations with, with our finance director, I think, you know, we can, we can do those first four, you know, absent the renovation of the Jocelyn Center, over the next two to three years, I really think we can get this done. And, and talking also with Elias, I think, which will be a significant visual, not just visual improvement, but aesthetic improvement and, and, and really up, you know, taking these fields and facilities up significantly. So I'd like to come back with more details on a phased approach, starting off with 1A, B, I mean, 1A, C, D, E, and F, and present that in a, in a more detailed format, and then also look at down the road, maybe a phase two, when that would be done and how to finance that. But I think we can, we're going to certainly look at how we can immediately finance that first phase, and I think we can do that over a three-year period.
Thank you for that, Mr. George. Is, is there anyone that has a dissenting opinion from that that was just stated? Or would like to, yeah, Mr. Mayor, pretend.
Of option 1.4. No, some of these are pretty easy to put in a roadmap and launch, you know, a basic facelift of the teen center, we can allocate money and budget that and launch that, you know, in a month. But I think for some of these, we would benefit from having a bit of a design to say, what does the rest of the park look like? Do we reconfigure sidewalks? You know, where did new lighting go? Do we tuck in other courts? And that would give us something to approve to, to sort of finalize a roadmap. And that's just, it, it sounds sort of, it's an implied task, but it's not listed out here. And we could end up having three meetings because we're arguing about, you know, where horseshoe pits go, and if we don't have a design thing that we could just reference. So I would put an asterisk on this to throw something in there. Maybe that's part of 1F, is that we just have a design plan that we could look at. There were some really good ideas from the high school kids on their civics day, you know, the idea of a mini amphitheater, and there's a ton of places we might be able to tuck something like that, but it would be good to have that added in.
I want to add on to that. The other thing that would be super helpful is if we could see the recovery for this. So for example, Elias mentioned that if we did lights, we'd get it back in saving, in savings, the same with irrigation, if we're saving water because it's smart water. And then I'm wondering, you know, again, we have recovery because these are revenue items, so, you know, it could help us with a, you know, the, the NPV, or whatever the public's equivalent of an NPV is.
Oh, yeah. You ready for this?
Yes, please.
All right. So, to Chris's point, I think a design is necessary because there was a couple things talked tonight, spoke about in public comment, right? There's clearly a concept of converting tennis courts to pickleball courts. This is not on the agenda, but when you look at, you know, 1F, right? I, I do not think Rec Park needs a dog park.
No.
I do, I, I love dogs, I have a dog. I don't need, I don't think Rec Park needs a dog park. But I, I will point out, to Mr. Loobz's point, can you guarantee any of it? No, you can't. These boards are going to change. The players involved are going to change, and then it's going to come up on a budget session, and that board's priorities may differ, right? Are you raising your hand over there, clerk?
No.
I was like, did I say something wrong?
I hear you, but putting it down in writing still helps.
No, it definitely does help, but there's no guarantee that it's going to happen, right? The other thing that I want to point out is, of all these items that we kind of laid out in, Mayor, what you were saying, there's some pretty good consensus on, the teen center is the only one that's kind of open to the general public. Everything else, we're spending money on things that take reservations, right? Costs money, and it's not just something that is necessarily open. Now, the sport court, tennis court, pickleball renovation stuff, that's pretty much public use, but when we talk about the ball fields, fencing and, and renovating them, right? That's fantastic, but that's for specific user groups. You know, when you talk about the, the soil makeup, week two, I took you on a little field trip, right? Every single, we had three, I've had three city managers. Every city manager has walked in swampy soil on Brett Field with me, right? I mean, if you guys want to right now, we can go outside and we can check out Lake Tiddicaca right behind first base on the softball field, and you can see the tire tracks from whatever maintenance truck decided to drive across the outfield in the last couple days. Super exciting. Oh, and there's a sprinkler that's like four inches sticking up out there? I don't know, but I know our liability insurance does not like that, right? But so when we start talking about renovating these fields, that's fantastic, but then we got to start talking about the, the rotation schedule, right? I believe you guys, we had that on your agenda. I begged for it to get put on your guys' agenda like two or three years ago, a rotation cycle because Brett Field was a disaster. And I was told by Mr. Henson, who's here in this room, that, well, the only way to really truly repair it is to give it rest. And so if you guys remember, and Sean, you know this because we moved softball over here, right? That was the first year the softball got moved, coed, adult softball got moved to the little field over here, it was because Brett Field needed to rest, right? That was the only chance for it. And so, I believe you guys voted on some sort of master plan schedule for field rest. But so if we're going to invest in the irrigation and invest in, you know, re-soiling these fields and updating these fields, then we need to have a true rotation, you know? Like some of these fields are designated for only one sport, right? So Brett Field needs to rest, well, it's ASO season, it needs to rest. Where's that soccer field going? There's no space. You know, if we're going to go with option one and keep all these buildings where they are and not open up additional square footage for use on this park footprint, then we need to truly have a holistic look at like, yes, these are patches of grass that are under lock and key 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that all the taxpayers are paying for. And you can make the argument that half the taxpayers in this town don't play baseball. They don't play tennis, they don't play soccer, you know, and here it is, we're spending money for this recreation, and who is it touching, right? And how much money is each one taking? You know, I think that if I seem agitated or, I don't know, animated about this, it's when everything went down at the pool, you know, and we had a line of people at public comment, like, I want Beach City Swim Club, I want Trojan Water Polo, I want South Bay United, you know, I want Alpha, right? They are all fighting for space. And we talked about, Lance, you were, you were a huge advocate for this. You're like, what does it cost? What is our cost recovery? What's our cost recovery on the tennis courts? What's our cost recovery on the baseball field? How much water are we using? What does it cost to turn the lights on? Are we mowing that grass? You know, I, I did some math here because it really did bother me, this 2,800 hours. Just throwing this out there to you. That means that seven hours a day, those fields are in use. Seven hours a day. I can tell you right now, no one's been on Stevenson Field for a couple weeks. I mean, the maintenance guys go out there, right? But so, you're telling me that when it's in use, it's in use for 15 to 20 hours a day? That's just not feasible, right? And so, it's important when we're looking at all this, it's not fair to beat up on the swimmers because the pool costs us a bunch of money, and it's easy to, hey, we can charge this much for that lane for this amount of time, when, you know, these other user groups are getting the, the grassy fields for next to nothing, and what's our water bill every year, right?
Pretty significant.
Huge water bill, whether it's purple pipe or not, it's still a huge number, and it's skyrocketing, right? So I think if we're going to move forward with option 1.4, whatever you said, Chris, you know, I think there needs to be a true plan in place, but we need to look at everything holistically. And I was really hoping that this conversation would be less mechanical and more fluid with like, a map of the park up on the screen and all of us talking about like, well, this gets utilized all the time, and staff coming up and saying, hey, guys, well, here's the opportunity zone. I live at this park, I'm at this park 40 hours a week. This is where people are utilizing it. This is empty, like those horseshoe pits. Sean, you're in this building, right? Where you check out. You walk past this area all the time, right? When was the last time you saw somebody throwing shoes there? I don't think since the day they opened, right? There's cornhole out there, right? No one utilizes it. Shuffleboard, anybody in this room play shuffleboard out there? I've played once. I had to, right? Jamie's, Jamie's played, but it's that kind of conversation, right? That's what I was really hoping for this.
It's a great point, and it emphasized two things that we brought up earlier. One is utilization, because we don't know our asset utilization right now. So I think that is an important component, even if staff has to take an educated guess about what the utilization is. I don't think it's too hard to do some back-of-the-envelope math in terms of how much these fields are being used. And some form of ROI, as Mrs. Watson stated, where we can prioritize what we put forth in 1.4. And I would urge us to consider irrigation again. Do we really need to have grass at Brett Field? I know that's sacrilege, but if we're going to use that as multi-use to Councilmember Nichols' point, it's not set up that way currently. And even with a better irrigation system, it's going to be tough to get maximum utilization out of that space. So I also think about Rec Park, there are areas that aren't really that well-trafficked in Rec Park that could probably stand to have non-sprinkler turf. And if we could reduce the green, the grass by 10, 20%, that is a huge savings and huge water savings in an area that wouldn't really be that trafficked. So I, I think there are those opportunities here at Rec Park in particular. All right, yeah, Councilmember Nicol.
To that point, right? I was in a meeting, I forget what it was for, but somebody said, if you were building the park from scratch today, right? If you take that approach, if you look at the footprint, if you build the park from scratch today, or even any one of those fields, how would you do it, right? Would Brett Field and the softball field and Stevenson Field, would the foul, foul areas be turf, right? Those are problematic areas. Those are areas that become swampy or hard to mow or, you know, heavily, heavily use their warm-up areas. If you were redesigning the aquatic center, would you design it with a better traffic flow? I don't know if anybody's been there, I know, hey, you have, but when those club teams are coming and going, you know, there's club teams out in the parking lot stretching before going in to swim. You know, I mean, it's, there's, we have issues, but looking at this and just saying, oh, yeah, option one, yeah, this is great, because it's what's presented to us. But in order of, the idea of consensus, I am not in consensus on anything that I'm looking at here, because I don't think it's enough information. And I honestly think that, how can we, how can we make a decision on the options that we are given before the feedback of these 10 people was given to staff so that you can come back to us based upon the feedback that we've received during your public meeting and the public comments received by the public, we're taking into account, and this is what we think is best, and these are your options.
I think the option we're deciding on is to not go to a multi-generational building. I mean, because that's the long pole in the tent. So that, after that, we, we cherry pick a bit of this, but I think what you're seeing, Ally, is that if we don't have a design, then you, you know, you run the real risk of having city council people show up with a graph paper and say, well, I think we should put one of these here. And, believe me, I mean, that is a possibility. So don't let, you know, idols' hands are, are, are ageless. So I think that, that as we move forward, adding a step in here of, here is the design with the big laser pointer to Councilmember Nichols' point and says, this is underutilized and we can fit one of these here, or here's how much more expensive turf actually is than grass because you have to replace it, like we did at campus, which was really awesome. There, there are, there are things that, that on a design piece, we can see that will address a lot of these things, but I think option one, the biggest part of it is just deciding we're going to keep three buildings and not have one big one, because to Commissioner Stolnack's point, I think anyone on the ground realizes that these are three discrete user groups, that, that one of the user groups definitely doesn't want to be with the other two, and I don't blame them.
So my, my comment to align with Councilmember Pimentel is, we also, on the design in here, we're not talking about the picnic area, which hasn't been renovated since the 50s. So, and, and the perimeter landscaping to ensure that it's, you know, it's drought-resistant. So there's components here that are missing. So I, I mean, I am definitely for option one, and to me, number 1A is the most important because we do have the funds for that. It is the most under, it's the, the people that have the least voice, and it's the most, I mean, if you, if anyone's been in the teen center in the last year, it is absolutely atrocious, and it's an embarrassment to our city. So I vote that we go with option one, and that we put option 1A as a move forward with and that we put option 1A as a move forward with that, come up with the design. And then, but part of that design is looking at A, the skate park, but then also looking at those basketball courts because those basketball parts, courts, you know, they have a lean and they're, are they really viable? So, you know, is there, should there be basketball courts up there and have that conversation? But I think that needs to be number one. And then really, while we're moving with number one, look at these other things and start prior, like, then we can have a secondary meeting to, to continue the prioritization process. But I think this meeting is the beginning of many. I mean, it's taken us a long time. I've been asking for this meeting for over a year. So I'm really excited that we're having it finally. Um, but I think that we need to be having this meeting on a more regular basis so that we can move forward. And to, to, um, Councilmember Pimentel's comment, we really need to see a design, especially for the picnic area and the, um, the lawn bowling and shuffleboard area.
Thank you, Councilmember Persick. Does staff have enough direction at this point to move forward? Do you feel, you want to do a recap or do you feel like given the minutes and everything else, video recording, we're good?
No, we absolutely have excellent direction. We're taking notes on all the comments and we will incorporate all of that into kind of a, a design and a strategy and a phased approach in, in addressing all of these.
Thank you. And then we have in here discussion considerations, if my colleagues in the council agree with this, I would like Rexon Park Commission to address these policy decisions and make recommendations back to the councils. Anyone on the, on the council object to that? No, good. Thank you. So if we could have, uh, Mr. George, if we could have staff do that as well, or Rexon Park, staff work with Rexon Park Commission on these policy guidelines? Thank you.
So just as, as, as we're wrapping up, I just want to, you know, hear from the commissioners, you know, I just want to make sure we're, you know, the commissioners are all volunteer and, you know, people that, that come onto the commission, give their time. And I just want, you know, to hear from them, to see, to make sure that they're being utilized and that we are empowering them to do, to be to our eyes and ears of the park.
Yeah, I just wanted to, one thing I wanted to address what, uh, Councilman Nichol was talking about, about the turf versus grass. Uh, I have a bit of an issue with turf. I think there's some environmental concerns there. Um, also with health of kids and with people. So I want to look into that further. I don't necessarily want to go with turf. Also, it takes away with the natural aspect of our park. Um, so I am not for turf. Um, but, uh, the more that the Rec Park Commission can have in, um, deciding factors for our parks, uh, the better. So I welcome more work for us.
I'd like to thank council, um, for having the meeting. It's good to get in front of people and get to a decision. Um, a lot of what you see in option one is what was being suggested about three years ago by us. And then a survey came out for, by RJM and all this, and we had this whole discussion where there was two years spent and a few hundred thousand dollars to basically come to the conclusion that, you know, without patting ourselves on the back or anything, that we had kind of seen as being the only realistic solution. And I'm very excited to see that we're making progress and moving forward on it. And it took this meeting to do that. So thank you.
Anyone else? Chair Moda.
The commission is ready, willing and able to do anything that you ask us to do. And, uh, just give us the work.
Thank you, sir. How many years have you served on Rexon Park? Long time. Thank you for all your years of service. Much appreciated. All right. Any final comments from staff?
I have, I have a quick comment. I'm sorry, I neglected to introduce my amazing park superintendent, Christopher Henson, earlier. And I wanted to make sure I did that because you all know how hard he works to keep, keep these parks and the trees looking good. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henson.
Okay, yeah. No, just to add, and I want to thank the, the commission and the council for providing the direction tonight. And we as staff are really encouraged about moving forward with something concrete. I mean, no pun intended, but actually not concrete. Um, but, uh, we're looking forward to bringing, bringing back a workable plan and, and a product that we can, we can all be proud of. So thank you.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
No, no, no. You have item number two for the revised.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, man.
Item number two, which is.
And we've only been here an hour and 34 minutes. Sorry.
This is, this is a quick item.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. George. We just, I want to clarify something Councilman Nichol was asking. We asked if anyone on the council was opposed to asking Rexon Park Commission to move forward on the discussion points, AKA policy guidelines? Are you opposed to having them do that? I thought we already addressed that.
Sorry, I, I just thought, and this has come up numerous times on the dais, that there's numerous, there's plenty of situations where we'll talk about something and it's like, well, I wonder if the commission's even listening. So they understand like what we're hoping for, the direction we're going in because many times there's like a wall between council and the commission. You guys have no idea what we, what we desire, what our long-term goal is. And being someone who was on a commission, it's fun being on a commission because you can, I mean, focus in, right? You're looking at stuff through the, through the microscope. Whereas as a council member, you're zoomed out, you're seeing the entire thing and you're trying to figure out how to make, you know, what do you call it? Make the stew or something, Chris? I forget how you say it. But with you, with regards to like the discussion consideration, you know, recently something came up. There's a user group that is displaced currently and they're looking for field space. And so I posed the question, okay, well, what field space is available? You know, or Brett Field was the flood tomorrow, like where would ASO go, right? And it, it came to me that the two fields behind us here are designated for, well, Stevenson is designated for hardball only, hardball, hardball use only. And then the softball field is designated for softball, baseball use only, which I found odd because I'm pretty sure we're registering kickball teams as we speak. So I don't know how that works there. But with Stevenson Field, I knew I grew up playing soccer on that field. Right? That was a practice and a game field for a certain division because campus didn't exist, you know? And I know it's been changed, but I also played high school baseball on that field and the outfield was just fine when we played. It was, it wasn't a problem. And so I think that it's something that we need to consider or we need to start looking at all of our grass space as like, it belongs to everyone. It belongs to every user group. You know, obviously there's priorities because it is a baseball field. So during baseball season, it's for baseball use, but when it's not in use for baseball, why can no one else use it? And, you know, just to the point of if we wait till their meeting, right? And then it comes back to us, then user groups that are currently in need or displaced, well, that's six weeks away by the time it gets back to us after they hear it.
Okay. Does anyone else in council want to address this tonight or wait for the Rexon Park Commission to come back with a set of recommendations? There are about eight items, seven items on that list.
Well, I guess what you're looking at, you're looking at this one particular item or are we looking at it holistically? Because I think when we start getting into the utilization of space, I mean, I've been asking the same question as you. Stevenson seems to be the holy grail and it's, it's completely unusable for anybody except for high school baseball and Babe Ruth. And, and I don't understand that. So that, that's one thing. The other thing I think that has to be looked at is when you have user groups that are given a specific allocation for field space and they're not utilizing it, it seems that they're just protecting it, that also has to be addressed. You can't block off an entire field for eight months in the anticipation that you may use it. I think we have to get to the point, since there's so much need for space, that you have to have a schedule. I'm going to have 10-year-olds out there on this day at this time. I think we have to get down to that level in order to maximize it because we have a lot of people looking to use space and it's dead space right now. So it's almost like squatters' rights right now and I think we have to look into that. So I don't know if that means we need to look at it right now. Um, I think it has to come back to us real quick.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I've stated three times, I think that we have no data on field utilization right now. Is that, is that a first statement? We don't know how our fields are being used. I mean, we could do some back of the envelope math right now. When's the next time Rexon Park Commission is meeting?
End of September.
Okay. Is there an urgency with this particular user group right now, Councilman Nichol, that needs to be addressed before then?
I think I would go as so far as to, in special circumstances, staff, the city manager, should be able to make executive decisions, you know, but because there's policies stating, you know, it's single use this sport only, like that, that handcuffs them, right? As to what they can do and how they can do it, you know? And so that's, that's where, you know, it's again, to that point of, you know, we never want to feel like we're skipping over the commission process and skipping over this, you know, the public process. But, you know, can anyone on the commission speak to why that designation was put in place? There had to be a reason, right? I mean, Bob, you've been there for a while.
A few years. That was put back in, or that was put in when soccer did play on that field and the ruts that were created by the assistant referees, uh, it was worse than having a truck go out there. So they could not play baseball in, well, couldn't play it safely. So that's why, that's part of the reason that it went to, uh, hardball only. Soccer was out there. You're absolutely correct. And, uh, I think flag football was out there.
This is a brand new field up at the high school right now, isn't it, that was paid for by bond money?
Well, I mean, that, that's the other, that's the other thing that, I wasn't going to go there.
I did.
But I was thinking, well, earlier tonight, right, we have, the high school tennis team is in here and they're, they're worried, right? We didn't demolish their courts, but part of the, you know, modernization of the high school, which is a wonderful thing. I voted for the bond. I was a supporter of it. You know, they're losing their tennis courts. So it's really important to us that we make sure that we provide tennis courts. So then what I always go to in regards to this concept of joint use is I'll look at the map of the city and I start looking for green space, you know, and, and I practice on that high school field. And I mean, that high school field, no one touches that field except varsity practice and freshman games. Maybe some JV games and one camp in the summer, right? And I've always, I mean, playing high school sports, always wondering, why are we not allowed to practice out on that? I mean, the grass is beautiful. I drove by today in awe. I mean, it's, it's fabulous. The, the infield's cut low and dying so they could reseed it and make it nice again. But it's, when we start talking joint use, it's, we have the two largest pieces of grass in El Segundo that pretty much do not get used for 75% of the year, right? And, and I'm, I'm a baseball person. Don't get me wrong. Love me some baseball. Still got my jersey. Uh, but that's what I, I don't understand. But if it's, so maybe it can be used for practice, you know? Or in regards to this rotation, how much rest, like Chris, Christopher Henson, this is your specialty. How much rest would that outfield need before baseball season for it to be safe and playable?
For three months.
Okay. So we never get the three months. So Bob, do you know, when does high school baseball start out there? End of January? Beginning of February?
That is correct.
It's like usually baseball is around Valentine's Day, right?
Normal, so, uh, than it has been. So January, February. Um, and then it's going constant all the way through July with Babe, with Babe Ruth.
Yeah. I'm going to make a procedural session. Sorry to cut you off, Chair Moda. Mr. George, could you, given all the intricacies of these, these decisions, I think if further demonstrates that we should not be hasty in making a decision, we need to take these things into careful consideration. Do you have a recommendation to go forward in terms of how we can incorporate the Rexon Park Commission in a timely manner and come back to council with some of these policy decisions?
On the, the, the field utilization portion.
Seven points. Consider converting Stevenson to multi-use field. Consider use of bred outfields by public. Consider sports use at Washington. Pickleball, transitioning volleyball to a mixed-use facility, developing a resident-first policy, and finally removing lawn bowling and adding courts. Is that something that we could quickly get the commission to weigh in on and get recommendations?
We can do that. Now, as for this, for the field questions that are coming up, I'm just chatting with the city attorney to see what the field allocation plan, I think that's what governs what you were talking about, the policy, and see if the city manager has, what kind of authority gives the city manager for special circumstances. And I can look at that between now and next Tuesday's meeting and report back to you by next Tuesday.
And then what about, at what point could we get some preliminary utilization numbers on field, on field, on fields?
We could get it by then as well.
By Tuesday.
By Tuesday.
Excellent.
Okay.
So we could actually add this as an agenda item to at least continue the discussion for Tuesday's meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question also? Do we have any field usage at Raytheon?
Well, that's what I was going to ask because part of, we, we, part of this discussion, we have not included the Raytheon discussion. And part of the deal for us to approve the, a change in zoning was use of that field. And I just wanted to, was going to ask that exact same question. How much have we used that field and are, is that part of, of the option for, for some of these displaced?
I'll speak from experience. Little league practice at Raytheon Field, bring a face mask. I had three kids get hit in the face with a ground ball. I stopped hitting ground balls to the kids at that field to the point where we kind of abandoned practice at that field. And the outfield, I don't know if the grass, if anybody from staff has been over there, but you're not playing anything on that grass. You really shouldn't. It's not safe.
They also, they also limit it to one team at a time on the entire space. So it's not, even though it looks like a massive space, only one team at a time can be out there. So.
Are you talking baseball or soccer?
Period. One, one team. If a team is out.
Is that, Mrs. Manci, is that something we get incorporated for Tuesday night's meeting as well? A review of Raytheon's field utilization and opportunities?
We'll get you much clearer numbers by Tuesday evening. Because one of the requirements was that they were going to maintain that field. And that was the whole premise of why we approved the rezoning is that we had access to that field space and they were going to partner with us. So I just want to make sure that they're holding up to their, and I believe that is the case. There is, there is some.
They're also still on the hook for the next phase of development to create green space as well.
And is the backfield at the high school being used for soccer as well? Sean, do you know, is the backfield at, at the high school being used for soccer by us or whoever?
You know, to that point, given that we're in the throes of reviewing a one-year joint use between the school district and the city, I think it would behoove us to incorporate their field utilization as well as it's a mutually beneficial relationship.
Yeah, and so I think right now, the reason why we're even, why there is a compaction is because the middle school's under construction, right? And that's fine. It was, it's very similar to what we've, and, you know, and staff can speak to this at better lengths than I can. But when Richmond Field was under construction, we dealt with the same types of issues where there was like, okay, where are we putting these people, right? Where are we going? The only reason we went out to Raytheon was because the teams that would, the little league and softball and whatnot that would play the middle school couldn't anymore. So that was a field that we could go to and use that was tried, that was meant to get us through until the new fields came available at the middle school. So fast forward a couple of years, you know, this may not even be an issue, but it is now. Um, just because you love me and I'm putting, I would like to add another bullet point for you guys to discuss. Have you ever looked at the inclement weather policy? Incliment weather for the fields, that policy? Do you know if there's a puddle on Stevenson? You can't play baseball on any field at Rec Park. All the fields are closed.
Well, I don't think it has to be a puddle.
Yeah, I'm just, but if one field.
When you, when you call six o'clock games at eight o'clock in the morning, that's a problem.
When it's 80 degrees out, the sun's out and hey, that field may seem like a lake. But some of these other fields don't have the same drainage problems, right? And so that is, that's a policy. I have it printed. It's sitting on my desk. I've been staring at it for about five months, waiting for this opportunity. I would love for you guys to look at that policy and then add some common sense to it and send it up to us so that we can rubber stamp, approve it and move on with our lives.
Send it our way.
Yes.
Anyone on council opposed to Councilman Nichol's recommendation? No. Great. Good addition. Thank you.
What else can we do?
All right. Next, next item, Mr. George.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
We've got this recorded, so.
This, uh, this, this item is a, a quick item. Um, the, as, as you may know, the Cal Cities, formerly a League of California Cities, annual conference is next week, actually here in Long Beach. And part of that conference is a, what's a, a general assembly where all cities get together and, and vote and, and on, on legislation that's up in Sacramento. So they're asking us, and we need to do this by Friday, for a, a delegate and an alternate delegate. And I believe myself and the mayor are the only two going to the conference. So in my conversation with the mayor, if you could, uh, this item is to designate myself as the delegate and the mayor as the alternate delegate. Uh, and, and just so you know, there's no resolutions for consideration. So I would just be there taking notes and, and if there's any bylaw changes or so forth. So that, that's the item to make me the, the delegate and the mayor the, uh, alternate delegate at the general assembly at the league conference.
Okay. So for the council, only have a motion to approve or comments?
Persick's approved.
Okay. Do we have a second? Chair, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, 5-0. Madam Clerk?
And the mayor, you would just have to sign the, I think the clerk has the form for you to sign. Or maybe to, well, we have to get it in by Friday. So tomorrow we'll make sure we get you that signed.
Lot to do tomorrow.
Okay, I'm here.
I think Mesia has the form.
Okay.
And then just because, since we're having a conversation about parks and recs, the, I just want to remind everybody that the plunge design item is coming to us shortly, correct?
Yes, I'll be working with a public works director on the timing of that, bringing that item forward.
Uh, city attorney, I got a question for you. And it's really, uh, it's more of, I, I remember, I was on the planning commission for four years before I realized that I could actually request to put something on the agenda. So the five of you know that you can request to put something on your agenda, right? So you five are the eyes and ears and blood of the Parks and Rec, right?